This meeting of the Plan of School Committee, the public order with a wonderful crowd, the Plan of School Auditorium. We have a tri-partners agenda. We have a tri-partners. We have our own business and then we have a joint meeting with the subcommittee. And it's screening as most people will be watching us on many of the multiple media through which they can watch us. Is anyone listening to me?
Yes.
You're all talking. You're all talking.
You're watching.
Multiple media. You can watch on the, I think you can watch on Brooklyn Interactive Television. You can watch online at the website. It will be archived on the website. I will send it to them when people show up and start tweeting and tweeting us as they promise to before you plan on tomorrow off the ESPNA website or in a month at a TED Talk because we'll get another meeting. All right. So first of all for this administrative, the calendar is in front of us and on the page perhaps. One adjustment is the New Plan of School, 20% of the on gala is beginning on November 19th. That was a change from last week, just prior to different last week. Anything else? Any other additions to the calendar? All right. We have a consensus agenda, which our vice chairman, who's the deputy chief of the fourth and that and that and that. Do I have a motion for a minute tomorrow? Motion, philosophy, second time Mr. Chang, all those in favor? Great. Subcommittee and we are on course, scram. Finan. Finan. That's loud. Finan's meeting on the day of the meeting. And our agenda will have four items. One, we will be reviewing the approach that Mary Ellen is proposing to long-term financial protections. And we will be also reviewing the quarterly, the first quarter report and scholarships and finally grants. So robust agenda and more to come after we have that discussion.
Questions? Can I ask you all a question since we have a minute here? Do you prefer that the subcommittee chairs field questions and votes and whatnot or do you prefer that the chair do it? Like, do you want Beth to ask for questions or votes? Do you prefer the chair do it? We kind of do it both ways. The subcommittee chair?
Questions?
All right. Seeing none. Mr. Pollock, capital improvements.
There's no, no report from the capital improvements subcommittee. We met immediately preceding the last school committee meeting and reported then and there's always lots of activity, but most of it is at the moment focused on the agenda later this evening. So we still need to set a date for the November capital subcommittee. So Mary Ellen, we need to kind of focus in on that and get that published. So stay tuned for our next meeting date.
Okay. Curriculum, Ms. Gatto.
We will be meeting, we will be meeting again on Wednesday, October 19th. We will be discussing the educational plan for the high school with the acting headmaster and you're all invited to come.
Speak into it. Speak into it.
Okay. On October 19th, the school curriculum subcommittee will be meeting. We will be discussing the educational plan for the high school with the acting headmaster, Anthony Myers. That's it?
All right. Moving right through. Government relations, Ms. Dunn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to report.
Policy review, Dr. Jackson.
Trying to avoid the boom. Policy sub-review committee met this morning and had a rocking meeting. I think it's important to say that. Our subcommittee does a great job and I appreciate the staffs present, including Sam Zimmerman, Nicole Gittens. Awesome. And Andrew Bott, who is our superintendent. And Mary Ellen. We briefly reviewed the feedback on the meal charge policy coming from the school committee at a previous meeting and are working to make revisions based on that feedback to bring for a second reading. Obviously not this evening, but for our next school committee meeting. We got a really comprehensive and thoughtful briefing from the head of, coordinator for health services on our opioid. Use. I don't know where that is. Let's check it. It's better. Okay. Is that better? It's the word opioid, I think. So we got a briefing on the opioid education and Narcon or Naxalon use policy that we are required to put into place by December of this year as well as corresponding procedures. And the subcommittee reviewed that and made some suggestions and modifications. We are going to make some further edits and then proceed to put it out for public comment before bringing it to school committee for a first reading in a meeting in November. I can't remember the date. And then the last topic we got into was the need for a hazing policy. We currently don't have one. We have confirmed that we need a standalone policy that is cross-referenced with our bullying policy and our discipline policy and we are going to make our way through some edits for that. Thank you. November 9th is when we're doing the opioid conversation again. And I believe at our next meeting, Andrew, you might need to help me with this. You and your team are bringing a packet related to Title IX and Title VI to subcommittee to discuss at our next policy subcommittee meeting.
Correct.
I think that's it. Any question? How's that feel to you? Any question?
Just a quick question because I know Title IX, but what's Title VI?
Title IX is the, I mean Title VI is the anti-harassment discrimination policy pertaining to race-based harassment discrimination.
Thank you.
All right. Terrific. Any other liaisons or updates? Ms. Sharlovsky?
I'm sorry. I think it didn't make it to our list and I forgot to tell you when you were doing the calendar. But as you may remember, last week I mentioned the Kizalwaka visiting group that are coming next week, teachers and some healthcare providers. And unfortunately, our school workshop is the night that they're having their benefit. I hope you might be able to go, but there may be some opportunities for us to meet with some of the people and it's been, I've attended some of the events in the past and they've been very interesting, the work that we do with the community there, the interchange. And I think there is also, there was supposed to be a student trip there this year, but it got canceled unfortunately. So, thank you.
Good. Any other liaisons or updates?
Wait, I should, I should mention Kizalwaka is in Nicaragua for those people who don't know at home.
Good. Anything else? Our next item is our student report, but our student is not able to attend this evening if I'm not mistaken. Okay. So we will move on to our superintendent report.
So given that there are two days of school between the last school committee meeting and this one, it's a brief for a superintendent report this week. Wanted to update the committee that last, this week, yesterday, the senior leadership team met to discuss our priorities for the year in preparation for the workshop next week with each member of the senior leadership team discussing priorities that are currently being worked on, additional priorities for the remainder of year and other possible items that would be long-term. And I think that what's, what's really important here is that as we continue to focus to get to know and understand the district, schools in the district and how we operate, we are, we're resisting the temptation to create long-term plans now until we have the deeper and more full understanding of the strengths that we possess as a district and the challenges that we face. So over the next week, we'll be summarizing the priorities we discussed with the school committee to engage in a thoughtful discussion next week. And we'll also talk about the, the, the plan. I say that we're not developing a five-year plan today, but the goal is to work over the course of this year to develop a long-term plan in conjunction with the committee. So that will be a conversation for us to, to really all engage in together next week at the workshop as we work to finalize those priorities with the full committee. One update everyone I met today, we had our monthly meeting with PTO presidents and school council co-chairs. The agenda is jointly developed with topics suggested by both me and district leadership as well as parent leaders. And I just want to say how much I thoroughly enjoy meeting with and working with the group of parents. It was one of the things Dr. Conley said was one of his favorite events and he was correct. It's really an incredible balance of, of PTO and school council, parent leaders advocating for the needs of individual schools, but also understanding and working jointly for the needs of the district. So it's an incredibly dynamic, incredibly powerful, incredibly engaging group. Today we talked about improved coordination with the district on software purchases for schools. PTOs have funded for years software and we talked about the process to include the curriculum subcommittee and the finance subcommittee in the process so that we are, what has, what has, was once a pilot that many PTOs funded have now been funded for many years in terms of software and so it's not so much a pilot anymore. And in, in the discussion shared, section D seven of the district policy manual that relates to PTOs and school fundraising and effort for us to all be on the same page in terms of school committee policy around PTO donations and things like funding software. It was a wonderful discussion and we have some really great next steps in that process. We also discussed the ninth school selection, the process for VHS expansion, an update on the contract negotiations, follow-up on VHS, the VHS graffiti incident. And so for November, we already have identified two agenda items, which are the principal searches as well as the registration process and the, the way in which we welcome new families to the district. And PTO leaders, parent leaders are particularly interested in this because the transition several years ago from school-based welcomes to a district welcome center, parents want to be sure that the, the best foot of all schools are put forward and that the parent groups and schools work with the, the office of student affairs together so that families are getting information about the schools. And it's another really great example of the partnership that parent leaders want to forge with us. That's a great meeting. School visits, like I said, there was not a lot of time between the last meeting and today. I was able to spend some time at Pierce this afternoon administering the BAS to fourth grade students and I have to say it was wonderful. I thoroughly enjoyed the time I spent at Pierce, administered the BAS to a student new to Brookline and learned an incredible amount about the students through the process, not only about reading, but the students' interests, what excites them about school and had time to, to administer the BAS with the second student. I hope I can go back soon. It really, it was great and I sat right in the middle of the library, right in the center of Unit A and it was just, it was just incredible, the buzz of the school and really having that one-on-one time with a student. And it really reaffirmed for me, I've said many times, that while a lengthy assessment and one where we are, you know, are committed to, to figuring out ways to more efficiently administer it and support educators as they administer it, but the amount of information and the quality of information and what you learn about a student as a reader is really just incredible and it really reaffirmed, you know, my commitment to that tool as a piece of, of what we use as a district in our ongoing work with students. That's it? The end? Yes. Any questions? If I can ask that? Any questions?
I think we should be an empowered committee. Can I ask a question? It's a lot of noise. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm curious about the, how when someone besides the teacher is administering the BAS, how does the information from the BAS about the student get communicated to the teacher?
So when it happens in a school, the, there, you know, if it's a literacy coach, you know, there are many possibilities, whether it's the choice of teachers to use collaborative time to do that. It's a much easier process than, you know, me coming in and administering the BAS. At the very end of the day, the teacher and I had a few minutes to, to talk about it. I made sure that I wrote incredibly thorough notes and that's, that's part of the, that's part of the challenge of administering it is that the more you write about what you are learning and the more you record on the recording sheets, the better the information is. And, you know, what, what was interesting in the conversation is that the classroom teacher in sort of the snapshot overview that, you know, the time that we had was able to say, that really confirms what my sense was from working with these, these two students at the start of the year. So it, I think it's a much harder proposition when it's someone from outside of the school than when it's team members who know each other well, that have a routine of, you know, sort of regularly scheduled, sort of self-selected time at collaboration time, for example, to, to communicate that. In my case, it was the thoroughness of, of my notes and what I wanted to, to communicate about the students as readers.
I just, I want to clarify, generally, isn't the teacher himself or herself giving the BAS? So that is the person taking the notes and recording the information, so reporting back to them is less of an issue? Yeah? Okay.
One of, two other things that are not in the superintendent update, just, we'll send this out. The VHS National Honor Society induction is Tuesday, October 25th from seven to eight for anyone who's interested in attending and Anthony and I and associate dean Brendan Kovas met today with representatives from the Anti-Defamation League to talk about our next steps and what we see as a future, soon-to-be current partnership in, you know, our ongoing work to create and support, not create, but support and make more robust a positive school climate for all students.
Good. Thank you. We did just meet two business days ago, so I think we're, we're all recognizing that. But thank you, that was a great report. It's also just good to hear sort of specific tangible interactions with the students and with some of the curriculum because it's great, you have experience from one building, so it's always great to hear your thoughts from the other building. So thank you for that. And so we're now going to move on to our presentation. We are really early. Our presentation discussion of enrollment projections. If Ms. Dunn is ready.
In the school committee packet, can you hear me? No? In the, in the school committee packet? In the school committee packet this evening, you have a pretty detailed memo in terms of how we're going to be approaching enrollment projections and school boundary alignment that is, we believe is required in the district. With the, the only update to this particular report is really a footnote on, I'm going to forward you to the slide, is on, in the enrollment projection appendix, excuse me, we have a location that should actually be 55 plus age restricted. You can just make a note of that on your, on your own packet. What we've done with, for the future enrollment projections is we've established through the superintendent an enrollment working group. That group has already met and it includes internal staff, department staff, both municipal and school staff, who all seem to have some role and responsibility for enrollment or are often asked for enrollment studies or enrollment reports. We have members from the assessors office, planning, school department and actually two members of the planning department, as well as we've included and have hired a demographer that did similar studies and projections for other districts that I've worked for that will be producing our first enrollment projection report. And the goal of this report will be an annual report, a formalized annual, annual report of our enrollment projections, which will also include responses to many questions that have been asked from the override study committee to just through this ninth school process and really having the community understand where our enrollment is coming from and where we are projecting it to be in the future. One of the changes that potentially will occur from the committee's standpoint is you will be shown as part of an enrollment projection, a one-year cohort survival, a five-year average cohort survival and a 10-year average cohort survival. So you'll have a low, medium, high projection and that will be part of the report. You will also probably see as part of the initial report, our demographer asked for the October 1 enrollments back to 1955 to actually see whether, what kind of growth period, wave we're in and to see if there's any kind of cyclical pattern that we may be in and that we can use for our planning purposes going forward. With regards to the defining, sorry, defining the boundaries, I've listed in the report for you probably 13 to 15 criteria that will be used as part of a redistricting plan. The redistricting needs to be a very transparent process. It's a three-year, generally a three-year process because part of that is to increase the reliability of our census data because as you are aware, many of the students we're trying to predict aren't born yet. And so is the town census data is our source for not only births, but those that move in that are residents of Brookline and as such, we need that municipal census information to be reliable and accurate. So we'll be working with the town clerk's office in the future to figure out how to help them with that process through education through the schools. And also included in the report were, is to just increase some information or access, make it more accessible to where our students live last year as part of last year's enrollment projection report and I can go through those maps quickly. Just as a reminder, the district lines of, as they exist now. And the other map that was included was a K through 12 by district map. And then we also plotted for you a pre-K through eight district map from last year where students lived. And I'm just going to use Baker as an example. Baker district has currently, or last year had 867 students that lived in the Baker district. The, the Baker enrollment was less than, at the Baker school was less than that 867 students. So we are, we are moving students out of Baker into Heath or Lincoln or other schools. So the maps really show where the students live, not where the students are actually attending and provides for the committee some sense of kind of where the population is without and what we would need to do if we were going to align our district maps or either change our district boundaries or align how we use our buffer zones. There is some resetting that we will need to do with, with some of this information that we're looking at. And we're looking at a set of maps that we can include in future enrollment reports as well because oftentimes people find it helpful to see the representation graphically and pictorially. We also provided a change to, in the pre-K eight from last year, from 2011, 2012, to also provide us a lens in terms of where there may be growth occurring in the district in that pre-K eight age group. You'll see there's growth in Runcle District, Devotion District and Pierce District. But again, there's also growth in all other districts of Lawrence, Driscoll, Heath and Baker as well. Lincoln probably saw the least amount of growth in that three-year period. Also included for you in terms of planning purposes, we looked at the pre-K three population because in five years, those students will be grade four through eight and to look at where those students live last year and we also did a change map as well in terms of also where are those students, what was the net change in three years and to see whether that population is actually growing or is that population declining. And as we, as this map demonstrates, we have growth in all areas of the community except for the Lincoln district in terms of where students live. So with that, I guess I'd open to any questions or additions that you would like for consideration in both the enrollment projection reports as well as our approach to redistricting.
Okay. I'll ask a question even though I'm not recognized by the chair. I have two questions. One, who was our demographer?
We are entering a contract with Ruth Quinn Burdell.
Okay. And have they ever done Brooklyn before or is there?
So everyone needs to speak into the microphone because I think it's like, we actually can't hear audibly. We have to hear through the microphone in this room.
I'll speak louder. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I asked who was the demographer?
Yes, we've hired Ruth Quinn Burdell. Has she worked in Brookline? No. Has she worked on school districts and enrollment projections? Yes, she's done that for a number of years for a number of school districts.
Okay.
And her skills are insanely good.
All right. And the second comment I had was you asked for comments on the student assignment, well, you asked for comments on the, the whole thing, but the comment I would like to make is about the student assignment considerations. is about the student assignment considerations. And it would seem to me that on number 13 or somewhere here, I would like to see something that says it is our goal to keep families together in the same school, provided they want that. I think that's really important as much as possible. So that could be through grandfathering, that could be... It sort of says it, but I think I'd like to make it more specific.
Sorry. So the question was, families staying together?
So number 13 says minimize the impact of any change on current students, i.e. explore options such as grandfathering of students and families.
Are you talking about the one...
On page two.
Yeah. Ms. Scholupski, are you talking about the one-time redistricting when we open a new school or are you talking about the general sense of assignment patterns? Like when we assign students in general or the one-time redistricting?
I would actually say both, that we need to be cognizant of that. I mean, we may not always be able to do that, but I think that should be our goal to keep families together. Having had to go to three different schools with my children at one point, it's not easy.
I mean, as a general goal, keeping families together unless there's not a reason not to.
Yes. That's what I was trying... As long as that's what they want.
There are lots of goals here which I would consider fairly aspirational, some of which actually conflict. I mean, there are goals in here about things like...
Oh, where's that?
You know, maximizing vulnerability and avoiding creating economic disproportionality, which may come into direct conflict with each other. So I think we just have to realize that this is not only...
Our policy. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say these considerations are considerations, they're not rules and they're not in rank order for a reason. And so... And I was just saying that some of them are gonna end up conflicting, like avoid creating economic disproportionality is going to conflict with maximizing vulnerability. We know that.
Right.
It's happened before.
Right.
So if things change about our town, that's gonna be something we have to balance. And so I guess as a goal, keeping families together seems one of our many aspirational goals.
It's actually in our policy. If you go on as Ms. Scott just pointed out... Can you guys hear me down there?
No, you have to speak into the microphone.
I'm trying. Is it any better?
Another microphone over there.
Oops. Can you hear me now?
No.
No. How about now? No. It's on. It's not working.
A little bit more, can we change the layout of these tables a little bit and circle up a little more so we can at least see each other? I mean, we're ahead of time, so we have a little bit of time.
Sure.
We're gonna take a two-minute recess and readjust our tables.
Hello?
Nope.
Testing, testing.
All right, I think... I think you're getting into the microphone.
Okay. Now, can you hear me? Hey, great. Where do I start again? The issue was keeping families together when we do buffer zones or when we do other sorts of movement of students around the district. And I suggested that in what we put in on page five, that there be something that says our goal is to try and keep families together as much as possible. And if you look at our... Ms. Scott pointed out to me in our... In appendix A of this, on page nine at the bottom, family preference and sibling assignment. It sort of talks to that piece a bit.
Well, right, that's why I was asking. Are you talking about the redistricting process, meaning when we go through...
I'm talking about both.
Okay, but so I feel like they're two separate things because one is for any one family, can you keep them together when you're assigning them to a building is different from the full district-wide redistricting process that we're gonna have to go through when we go from eight elementary areas to nine.
Correct.
So we can put it in as a goal for both. I'm just saying it's probably gonna be different.
I think the goals should be there. I think, you know, we may not... The family may decide they don't want to do that.
Right.
You know, we may not have a choice, but I think that that should be the goal.
But I guess they're gonna... It's a great point, but I think there are lots of other things that are gonna be in here, things like if someone has one year left in a building versus having... Being a third grader and having many years left in a building, do you... You know, when do you move them? What does it mean pedagogically? Anyway, my sense is there are gonna be a lot of other things that come into play when we get to that point.
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Stone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can everybody hear me? Okay. So I'm just... I'm trying to locate what we're looking at here in the context of the way we have approached other changes and reviews of district boundaries and buffer zones in the past. And that's what I'm... I'm just not quite sure what it is we're looking at. So in the memo that introduces this packet, it says the second set of documents is an overview of the considerations for changing or updating school district boundaries and buffer zones. That is a process that has always, in my knowledge, to my knowledge, been handled by elected representatives and a town... And a committee put together, an ad hoc enrollment committee put together by the school committee so that the public has a way of holding accountable the people who make those decisions and the school committee can bring its own knowledge of the neighborhoods and the schools to bear on the process, which speaks to some of the things that I think Ms. Scholupski is talking about. So when the first buffer zones were developed, there was an ad hoc enrollment committee that established those buffer zones. Ms. Scholupski will remember... Before that, sorry. And before that.
So when devotion was overcrowded because of Dexter Park.
So there have been several moments where those decisions have to happen and they are necessarily, like most things in Brookline, a community-centric exercise that will benefit hugely from the work that Ms. Dunn has presented here and is gonna go on happening. So I'm really impressed and pleased that all of this exists, but I'm concerned in particular about the process that we are planning to use for a redistricting once a ninth school site is established and moving forward, and also how we would in the future review even the need for buffer zones. Because one of the things that we talked about when we did the last buffer zone expansion was that the ideal is eventually to eliminate buffer zones, that we actually had this explicit in our policy that it would be reviewed and that the idea was that there would be a review for the need for buffer zones on a regular basis with an eye towards not needing them. They are disruptive of the cohesion of district attendance areas. And it was a piece that was very important to the community when we did those buffer zone reviews. So all I'm saying is that all of that, I think, is important preamble and information to be included. And I just think... So I'm also trying to understand whether or not we are being asked to vote on a series of processes here that are new, new ways of handling this information, new ways of handling these decisions. But I really do think that the decision on... And maybe it would be better. I'm certainly open to hearing that it would be better to have a staff working group develop recommendations that the school committee then considers, although I would still want it to be a broader group than just the school committee. When we did the last set of buffer zones, we had the chairman of the Brookline Public Housing Authority. We had members of the Board of Selectmen. We had advisory committee members. We had the people in the school system who... Ms. McQ and others who did the assignments and knew the buffer zones incredibly well street by street. And we reviewed all of the possible choices with the communities to get their feedback so that we would have sort of ground-level understanding where we might have missed something about the configuration of houses, streets, topography, et cetera. So at some point, I still feel that that kind of review is really important, especially to the overall and largest decisions that we're gonna make about core attendance districts.
So I guess I wanna make sure or be clear, because apparently the memo is not, is that the memo did not have any intention of modifying the policy that exists where the school committee is very prominently placed in that policy as a decision maker. But to actually add to that policy a context of what happens in a redistricting to answer some general questions about what general considerations there are. So I don't envision... Redistricting has to be a very transparent process, so I don't envision any part of this document changing that transparency or changing how the school committee would approach it. So this is really about information. I would say that once the location of the ninth school site is known, within a few months, there will probably be a recommendation or a request for the school committee to establish a redistricting committee because we will need to get started, the work and the data collection and forming... Taking some of this information and forming a project plan to be ready to have hearings and response and as such. So I just wanna make sure that... And apologize if that did not mean to give that impression that there's a change or that we were changing the policy, but the committee is very much in control of this process.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. I was going off of the line under... On page five where it said, "Attendance areas for the various schools of the town will be drawn up by the superintendent and approved by the school committee." I think there is not enough ambiguity or detail in that particular sentence that allows for the process that I described.
I'm wondering, Ms. Stone, I mean, one of the things that we do fairly successfully in other parts of school committee superintendent sort of staff work is we set priorities and then the staff tries to assemble recommendations that meet those priorities and they tell us how far they got with certain pieces and they weren't... You know, they were able to do these pieces, they weren't able to do those pieces, and we can kind of have a dialogue about them, but the priorities and the criteria are kind of set. And then it would be... I would love it if someone spending a lot of time in Excel, not an elected person or a volunteer, was actually creating different versions of maps, trying to optimize for the criteria that we set out, and then they brought those to us and we had a discussion about them. So I don't think it's different from what you're saying, but I do wonder if there's just a question of priority setting and then recommendation work and then dialogue and there's kind of a public process as well. But maybe one thing we can do is just more clearly, Ms. Dunn delineate just what the different roles are and the back and forth, because I don't think there's daylight between these two, but it might just be helpful to see some of those iterations drawn out and that might...
As I said, I think the staffing on this is far and away just light years beyond what we had the last time we did a buffer zone review. So I'm incredibly appreciative of that and I think it's exactly the right way to be doing this. I guess my biggest concern is right in that middle section of the establishment of an ad hoc enrollment committee or ad hoc enrollment committee that is specifically charged with reviewing the work, making sure that all of the community process is followed and do... But that that committee exists, that it not be one presentation or a first reading of a superintendent's set of recommendations, we hold one public hearing and we're done. I think we need more process, as Mary Ellen was saying. This has to be completely transparent and I think that committee is how we ensure as a school committee that that transparency occurs. So that's... As long as that is a necessary piece of it, then I'm very, very happy with the rest.
I think it's also just an interesting question about buffer zones and whether our goal should be to eliminate buffer zones anymore, given the instability of our population changes. I know that's where we were, but now that we've been with them for some time and people seem to be managing, with the exception of buffer zones that go to four different schools, we still hear about that, but schools that have two buffer... Two options, we don't seem to be hearing a tremendous amount of... It's worth testing with the public.
Right.
Whether or not the goal should be to eliminate buffer zones, because without it, we have class size problems and people seem to care a lot more about... I think, but we need to test that.
Absolutely. And the class size has always driven, as we think said in the policy, if not in the policy, then in the statement on buffer zones themselves, we talk about the ability to assign students where they will have the best possible classroom experience and that is driven almost entirely by class size. So no, I think to call out one of our most diligent public commenters on the buffer zone process, and I'm somebody I would like to hear back from since she was instrumental in getting us to do that review and wanted a sunset, town meeting member Kate Silbaugh would be a good person to check in with to pressure test the question of whether or not buffer zones long-term. And again, short-term, the idea was just we will review them periodically to see whether the need still exists. The answer to that can be the need still exists, but I'm not sure we want to remove that periodic review and the overall long-term idea that a stable... A sta... You know, a stable stasis is without buffer zones rather than with. That's all. But we can pressure test that question.
And I think the only other question that I've heard come out is just in the community, a fair amount of... Because we have so much turnover and growth, many people in our community don't necessarily understand how students are assigned in general, how Metco's students are assigned, materials-free students, the placing of special education programs, district-wide programs in buildings and why that's easy or hard to move, placing of language programs, special, you know, English language learner programs. So I think there are a variety of things. So for example, there was just a dialogue on the community page about, well, could we just take all of our district-wide programs and put them in one building? I think it was asked in a fairly... Just a new person to the dialogue who was brought up to speed, let's say, on why you can't put all the district-wide programs in one building and why you can't even put, you know, half of them there and half, you know, somewhere else to minimize, you know, the impact. Because I think it just didn't really understand. So I think that's part of our job is to explain some of the pedagogical implications as well of why things are the way they are and why you may be able to take a beep out of a building and move it into a rental space nearby, but that's not actually true for an autism program because of the way the program pedagogically is set up. So I think there is just a fair amount of education through this process in addition to student assignment and transitions that we can help do. Dr. Jackson?
Just as a... Can you hear me? Is this working?
Yeah, just speak closer into it.
I didn't wanna make that echo. Is that better? As a parent who has gone through a few schools here in Brookline, I guess I would, along this conversation of sort of transparency and helping people understand the assignments, which I think is critical, I would also like to urge our superintendent and staff to continue down the path I think we've been going for a while, which is also being transparent about requests for placement. In my experience, that has varied incredibly in terms... In my experience, that has varied incredibly in terms of, somebody calls the superintendent's office and gets their child where they want them to go, and somebody else calls and they don't, and families being split up, which actually caused us to move. So, I would just encourage us to, as we sort of refine this process and go through it again, and be transparent, to the extent that some things really are systematized versus things where you do need to have individual and/or opportunities to accommodate individual needs, that that's made really clear, because I think, as a member of sort of the parent community, there, there is a lot of dialogue about, how can you finesse the system to get your child in the school you want them to go? And I think it's important for us not to be blind to that conversation.
And I think it'd be helpful if there were some guidelines or language that you all could give us about information you can disclose and information you can't disclose. So, if you say things like, there's a set of things that go into those decisions, for example, there are socio-, you know, emotional factors, there are, you know, many, many factors which may or may not be transparent, but there's a set of pedagogical, yeah, no, but I think just saying, I mean, to your point, that just even saying that there's a set of things that the, whoever's involved, the principals involved, the teachers involved, the parents, the superintendent's office, that there are decisions that get made for these kinds of reasons, not exclusively, but even that might help a little bit, even if you can't be specific about specific families, which is where everybody, which is where the dialogue is. One other thought on the demographer, while people are thinking about other things, I think it would just be helpful to, at some point, get a sense of what this person's mandate is, because there have been, over the last number of years, as you can imagine, any number of requests of information from the school department, everything from, you know, where are the broader regional trends for the metropolitan statistical area of Boston going, and how do we fit into that over the next 20 years? Everything from kind of broad macroeconomic trends through to more specific things around, you know, local real estate agents, are we working with them to figure out what's happening with turnover? Are we working with the local preschools to figure out what's happening with the growth in private preschools in Brookline? Are we working with, are we doing surveys of families? And I, this has been suggested, I kid you not, not only the children they have, but the children they intend to have, and can we ask them that? And to which the answer is usually no. But anyway, the appetite for information seems fathomless. So, it might be just helpful to set expectations about what this person's scope is and what we're hoping to get from, from them.
We will be doing that. Part of the reasoning around setting up a enrollment working group of staff is to corral all the people that get, generally get these types of requests from area, from all the departments, and have us all in the same room, problem-solving, and actually, more importantly, all dealing from the same data set. Because when we went back and actually looked at some of the enrollment projections or hypothesis or the answers, different data sets were using it, were being used at different sets, different periods of time. So, I think some of it is to reset the report, have an annual report, and then try to problem-solve some of those, the questions that we actually want to know annually. Also, using this enrollment working group to actually address the school committee policy of being the one that monitors or is able to quickly monitor and provide to the school committee in that enrollment report, hey, buffer zones are fine, buffer zones aren't, district lines are fine, district lines aren't, and actually be that bellwether indicator for the committee in terms of, do we need to do something, make a change? And be more proactive about that process, should we, should the district need to make some shifts because of some very specific population growth that's happening.
Mr. Pollack is marking up your map, doing math, which is always a dangerous sign, but other, I don't know if he has any questions. Are you going to ask anything?
No. No, I'm, I'm. My, my comment, which I made in the capital subcommittee meeting when we first saw these maps a week ago, was that I think they're, they're really quite wonderful, because there's no, well, first of all, I think, understanding where the children live rather than where they're enrolled is very, very helpful, because in the, over the long term, that's, that's what we want to assign, is the students that live in the district and not be considering how sort of oversubscribed or undersubscribed a building is, or based on the assignment, which is, again, using, heavily using the buffers. So, for instance, one of the things that we learned from the information that we've gotten is that, as we, we know that Pierce is vastly overcrowded, but we also know that it's even more so because there are Pierce students that are being assigned to neighboring schools in addition to extra classrooms in that building, and as Ms. Dunn just said, the same is true at Baker. I've been very, given a lot of thought and, you know, to a certain extent puzzlement about our challenge of picking a site in North Brookline or South Brookline with, against the understanding that there's overcrowding in both ends of town, and there's going to be a certain amount of displacement, or if we create all the capacity we need in one half of town, even though the demand is in both. And so, I think what these maps, and I'm particularly interested in the map that's the, where do the students live in K, in today's K to eight, which, again, there's a certain interest in looking at the K to three, because those are the actual kids. I may, I'm not a demographer, but, but my intuition tells me that a snapshot of K to eight today is going to more or less sustain for some period of time of to be the next K to eight, even though you immediately have some kids that are going to be moving into the high school. And what, with all my scribblings in math, really what, what I've been looking at and what I've largely determined is that, is that with this overcrowding at certain schools in North and in South Brookline, there really isn't a side of town that's favored, and if anything, and this is just my opinion, because I haven't looked at it very carefully, it seems to me that today, there's more pressure around here, around devotion and Pierce and Lawrence, because it's picking up Pierce. But that counterbalancing that is our projection of the expectation that while we expect to have a significant amount of new family housing units throughout town, we have a strong expectation of a, of a whole lot of those new family units in far South Brookline. And so, we're sort of balancing present and future. Back to the question about the, keep, I would agree with Ms. Ditko that, given that we expect several hundred more housing units and maybe that many children to appear in our schools from future development that hasn't even been designed yet, but obviously has been planned in South Brookline, we're not going to have stability where we could just draw a line and say, "That'll serve," because there's just too much change. And I think we want to bring this question back, not only to individuals who are highly knowledgeable, like Kate Silbaugh, but to the families in the schools, particularly who've been affected by buffer zone placement, and get their feedback about what the difficulties are with utilizing the buffer zones, because I think we, the, I remember a year ago, when the October enrollment report was published about this time, being just amazed that of our 200 and whatever, 250 classrooms, about 70% of them had 22 students in them. And then it was, and if you did 22 plus 21, it went up to 85 or 90. And that kind of ability to sort of presumably optimize the student experience in the classroom is a, I'm just repeating what Ms. Ditko said, is a huge benefit, that's a trade-off. Susan.
Mr. Chang.
So, I just want to express, sorry about that, how excited I am about this new film that Mary Ellen said she rocks. I'm very excited about that, especially giving us a completely clean slate in terms of looking at our demography as well as enrollment, and really, I would, I think, really benefit from maybe a debrief from the demographer about the state of the art in terms of demographic research, just because I, I think we need that lens at this point, and it will really help, at that point, refine and provide better precision in terms of our own questions.
Great. Ms. Gata.
I, I also want to point out that as we look at these maps, we can see where 40Bs have been proposed. We have almost reached the 10% affordable housing limit, but if these proposed 40Bs have their plans in before that 10% limit is reached, and if they have been approved, then even though we are at 10%, they will be built. So, when I look at North Brookline and I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then another one down in Brookline Village, six of these that are proposed, one of which I know is very small, and maybe a couple of them are, I think that I, it makes me very concerned about the population of North Brookline and the increase that we could have there in the future.
Good. And the only other piece, do you want to say something on that?
I just want to point out that in the packet on this sheet, the ones that are in North Brookline are actually not producing as many as the 40B in South Brookline. So, for example, south, of the 312 that will be adjusting the future enrollment reports, projections with 225 are, are estimated to be in South Brookline. The rest would be North Brookline, out of the 312. So, they're very small in the North Brookline area. I just want to make sure how to use this sheet, this particular sheet to your, to help supplement your information.
A couple of other things. One is, while people are still thinking of more questions, there are a couple times in here where the, I think, things like, we're anticipating approximately 700 additional students, we're looking at a shortage of 27 to 30 classrooms. I think it's just worth noting, if anyone asks, that those are based on last fall's projections that will be updated in November. So, there's language in here saying that this will all be updated in November, that language, just so people know, that's, those are the old numbers that you're working on updating. I think the other pieces, it may be worth looking at a couple of the pieces that are also going to be part of this packet, because there's going to be a whole set of information that informs decisions. One is the enrollment projections themselves. There was another analysis that's getting worked on, I think, which is the exposure of building-by-right opportunities. So, where people can expand on their current footprint, they can expand the number of units by right, which is different from 40B, but important when you're thinking about possible growth. There's a report coming out that's going to talk about the, the status of our buildings in terms of how many classrooms are in each one, and what's the capacity, and, and all that sort of thing, and where are the rentals? Because I think there's just been a number of questions, even this week, about things like, well, what is the Baker capacity? What is the, you know, Pierce capacity? And since that's sort of a fluid notion, I think it's just important for people to understand that at a building-by-building level, which also then informs our CIP priorities for the next five years of, you know, given that we have these giant building projects, if we don't know building-by-building what absolutely has to get worked on in the next five years, it's really important to put forth CIP priorities. So, those pieces are underway as well. So, not only the enrollment projections and the zoning by right, but the school building status. And then all that is going to lead to, and David or Mary Ellen, stop me anytime, is going to lead to classroom projections, meaning, given all the enrollment we're expecting, what are the classroom needs? And we can do it by district, by zone, I'm not quite sure how you're going to do classroom projections, but then you kind of look at that based on the, the buildings that are there. And all that should create for us, not only our CIP priorities in terms of money, but in terms of projects and plans for upgrades and modulars and rentals and all that sort of thing, and what's the plan to get us from here to the end state where a ninth school that we're going to vote tonight opens? So, at any rate, I think there are just other pieces that are coming in that have been under discussion, so people should, if they have thoughts on those, route them to Ms. Dunn or the vice chair. Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. We're actually on, more or less on schedule. So, we have a short break to absorb the selectmen when they come, and we will reconvene at 8 o'clock. So, thank you.